I'm meeting back to order, welcoming you to the Monday, March 21st, 2016 Falmouth Board of Selectment Meeting. The board has just returned from executive session and we're now in open session. I invite you to join us all in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on my agenda is we have a proclamation. Mr. Patterson?
Definitely a pleasure for me, since I know this young man and his family. Whereas John M. Turner of Boy Scout Troop 40 has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And John Turner met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and Falmouth. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor to honor its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank, and John Turner is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege. Now therefore, we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Mary, Pat Flynn, Rebecca Boffett, and Samuel Patterson, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Saturday, April 9th, 2016, as John M. Turner Day. In witness thereof, we have here on to set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed.
Motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Congratulations to Mr. Patterson. We hope that you'll be able to hand out the certificate at that event.
Will be my pleasure.
Great, thank you. Next, Chief Dunn has an announcement about the events coming up the next two days in honor of Deputy Sheriff Cottfilla.
Thank you. Just wanted to brief the board and the community as to the events that will be taking place the next few days for Deputy Sheriff John Cottfilla from Hillsborough. For the, let me just give a little history here and then I'll get into that. For those who aren't aware, and everybody probably is aware at this time, but Deputy Cottfilla, Deputy Cottfilla gave the alternate sacrifice when he was on duty, March 12th, 2016, where he was involved in a head-on accident with a wrong-way driver on the Tampa to Florida, Tampa Highway in Florida. The woman who witnessed it believes that Deputy Cottfilla sacrificed himself to save her life. He was a six-year member of the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. Deputy Cottfilla comes from a family of law enforcement officers. Deputy Cottfilla's father, John Cottfilla Senior, is a Massachusetts, currently a Massachusetts State Trooper. Formerly a Falmouth police officer here in the eighties for eight years. And just recently, we hired his brother, Michael, who is currently on, he was one of our new hires this past year. His maternal grandfather, Robert Cahoon, was a retired Massachusetts State Police Staff Sergeant who commanded the Born Barracks. So, the family is rich in law enforcement. We brought, I'm sure many of you witnessed it yesterday, we brought John Robert home yesterday. Officer Ruben Ferrer, Sergeant Ben Guthrie, Officer Tom McGuire, and myself were part of that escort from Logan. And I want to thank the board and town manager for allowing me to send officers to represent this department to Florida. And I sent Captain Jeffrey Smith, our operations captain, Sergeant Brian Lowen, Officer Julia Massey, and Officer Ronald Carpenter to Florida, and they represented this town. And was extremely appreciative of the sheriff's department down there, as well as the family. And I'll share with you also, as we know, they drove down, they drove one of our cruisers down. They were actually, they left Florida on Saturday, and they were able to take up the tail end of the procession. They were actually in Westport when we were on, I was speaking with the captain, and they were in Westport when we were on Route 3. So, they actually made the procession, so they made a full circle. The next couple of days, I will ask this community to be patient. Because the next couple of days, if what we saw yesterday is any sign of the respect and honor that will be paid to John Robert, we're in for a lot of people. In fact, I believe I spoke with Mike Gasparian this morning, and I think they were getting phone calls. There, I don't think there's a hotel room left in Falmouth. Next, tomorrow is the wake. It'll be at Chapman, Cole, and Gleason between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. There will be a police walk-through at 5:00 p.m. Those that aren't familiar with what a police walk-through is, all law enforcement attending the wake. We will stop the normal procedure of the wake, and it's just that, police will walk in as a unit, pay our respects, and then leave, so that everyone else can go in and meet the family. On, there will be, let me stop at the wake, there will be a lot of congestion on Main Street. Because the first half for the walk-through will be parking police cruisers that come in the Rio Hardest St. Patrick's Church. So, we're going to be taking up half that parking lot. We also have a plan, a contingency plan, to use the Island Queen parking lot they've allowed us. And we will bus any officers from there back to the site for the walk-through. Sometime after 5:00, 5:15, depending on how many officers come, I have no idea. There'll be ample parking in the church parking lot because those cruisers will leave. So, I just ask for the public, you know, be patient. There will be police officers, I have police officers stationed on the road. We will assist in getting everybody where they need to get to. The Wednesday is the funeral at St. Patrick's Church at 11:00. Again, we'll be asking for some patience. Right at the moment, the plan is to close Main Street from King to Nye Road. Traffic will be rerouted up King to Queen, back down Nye Road to Main Street, just basically making that loop. What we have done is personally met with every business and resident on Main Street during that, and explained what we were doing, and have their blessing. Some of the businesses are closing and allowing us to use their parking lots. We have also delivered, hand-delivered messages to every resident on King, Queen, and Nye to let them know that we're diverting traffic that way. Main Street will probably be closed from 1, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. during the service. And again, like I said, we'll get people around where they need to get. When the mass is ended, we will be shutting the procession route from St. Patrick's Church west of Main Street to St. Joseph's, Tammany, Tammany Terry on Gifford Street. What we've also done is, again, the amount of law enforcement coming, we have no idea other than, this involves three agencies, the police department, the Mass State Police, and a sheriff's agency. So, we can expect a lot of law enforcement. I'll give you an example. The young lady who lost her life one day on the job down in Virginia. She was laid to rest in Springfield, and they had well over 1,500, just law enforcement show up for that. I've been working with the town manager and other department heads, such as Ray Jack and the DPW. We're taking over the DPW as a staging area for all those cruisers. Lawrence and Lynch is assisting us. We're taking over his parking lot to stage all the police cruisers that will not be going to the funeral on Wednesday. We're staging them there. The Steamship Authority, the school department, and the RTA supplying us with 35 buses. And we'll be busing everybody, all law enforcement, to the site. So, that will leave the church available to residents who want to attend the service. If you're unable to attend the service, we're suggesting people who want to pay their respects, similar to the other day, to find parking spaces on Gifford Street. No parking is going to be allowed on Gifford Street. There's plenty of lots over there that people can be able to find, and they can stand along Gifford Street to show their respect as the procession goes by. Once, we may have to close, again, depending on the number of people shows up. We may have to close a portion of Gifford Street from Jones Road north to Brick Hill Road. But that is still fluid at this time, and we'll make a decision once we realize how many people are here at the funeral. So, that's really quick, what's going to be happening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just want to add that the sheriff's notification system has also gone out to residents, and so that's another.
We're really trying to be proactive. Our Facebook page, the chamber, we've kept them up to date. They're posting on their Facebook page. There was a message that was supposed to go out today?
It did.
It did, okay. Haven't been near a phone. And there'll be more messages coming out in the next couple of days. We really want to keep the public informed as to what's going on.
Put it also on the town website, as much information as we can would be great. Any other questions? I would like to take this opportunity then to have a moment in silence in recognition of Deputy Sheriff John Cottfilla. Thank you. The outpouring support for both him and for his family has been truly remarkable the past few days. It is a wonderful family that has given a lot to this town. And I think everything we can to do to be supportive would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. Something I'd like to speak on that is not on our agenda. You may do so at this time, please limit to two minutes. Next are our minutes, March 7th, 2016. Do we have any edits? In the public session?
Motion to approve?
Motion. Motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Next to the executive session, March 7th, item number one. This is dealing with the Wind Turbine Anderson and the front far cases.
I move approval as submitted, not to release.
Second.
Motion to approve and not release. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? And then we have the executive session, item number two, dealing with the EDIC land transaction discussion.
I move approval, and I believe we can release these.
We've now moved forward. Is that so? I believe you're right.
Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve and to release these. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Great. Next, we have two issues with our finance director, the approval of short-term notes. First has to do with Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust interim financing. Ms. Petit?
Good evening and thank you. I'm going to have Patty start moving the paperwork around the table. We've been down this road before, so, and I can just brief you on what you're signing here this evening. There was a memo in your packet. As you know, we have two major projects in the process of construction right now, and that's your water treatment plant, Little Pond Source Service Area. And these are really the second round of short-term interim borrowings for those two projects. And so, I'm requesting the board sign the paperwork for approval, and we can start the short-term borrowing for the, it's still in construction, but it's really the second phase of borrowing.
I did have one question, it just has to do with a percentage point. And you'll always find a number. It says the short-term interest rate is .10% and .13%?
Yes.
That's a pretty awesome interest rate to be able to get.
It really, it really is. I mean, the interest rates are really low, and especially borrowing through the trust. As you know, these projects, it's 0% and 2%. And just to elaborate a little bit more, the difference in interest rates has to do with when it's on the IUP and when it gets moved forward, and so they were on different years.
It's about as close as you can get to being a 0%.
Exactly. It's phenomenal.
It's a shame we can't bond further out.
I know.
Well, still, 20 million, 16 million, they were doing at that rate for the short term, so that's great. All right, we do need to actually have a vote to approve this short-term financing?
So, move?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? And the next item are some budget adjustments from when you came to us earlier, and where things now stand for the fiscal year 17?
Yes, thank you again. Again, there was a memo in your packet regarding some budget adjustments. Has it filtered through the Finance Committee this year? This is really a great segue, as you sign the short-term notes. We just bonded, the short-term notes that you signed last year, we bonded about 31 million in January through the trust. And so, the debt schedules that I used when I presented the budget to the board in the beginning of January changed. And they went down a little bit, and there was an adjustment in the, in the window of opportunity. We all like that term. And so, I was able to adjust the short-term and the long-term to the permanent financing schedules for these notes. That was one major adjustment. Also, the big, the other adjustment really too was to the school budget for 125,000 for the increase in Chapter 70 aid. And then we moved some, you know, money around. We make adjustments. A lot of times, we do this every year. We've done it since I've been here. Adjustments that move through the Finance Committee. They, it's their recommendation to town meeting, and sometimes we take money from one budget, put it to another budget. For example, the recreation, the Finance Committee felt that all the contracts for HVAC should be under the facilities maintenance budget, so they requested to move some money. And we worked with department heads to, at that time Helen Kennedy, to move the money from the recreation to facilities. And I did lay out some more budget adjustments. There was also the 23,000, which I think everybody is aware of, for opening the library on Sundays. Finance Committee felt that they were able to, be able to finance that through the budget.
Could you go a little to why our lighting did not make the savings that we were hoping for?
Yeah, we did. When I first looked at this, when I put the budget together in November, in December, and then came in front of the board, we were looking at a really big savings. Then I looked at it again, and there's some higher maintenance costs this year that I really have to look at. So, we did put some savings in there, but not as much as I initially thought. We did purchase a series of light bulbs through the year. And I know we have the LED lights that's supposed to last a long time. So, we really have to analyze that a little bit more and find out exactly what's going on. So, we wanted to put more in, although there is still a savings. But it was really the maintenance portion of the budget that, that increased. That we didn't realize the savings that we were thinking of right now. I mean, this is a little bit of a change in the last few months, but, you know, we still have the rest of the fiscal year and next year. We'll definitely be looking at that closely.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have two questions. The, in your memo, item two, the increase of 125,000, that's because our Chapter 70 funds increased by that amount from the state?
Yes. Last year it increased 70,000, and this year it increased a little bit more than that. So, we were able to realize those savings, I mean, that extra revenue from the state.
Okay, and then you mentioned that the total increase is 104,000?
Yes.
Now, where are those funds going to come from?
Okay, so 125 was the school.
Was from the school, right?
Right. The biggest part was the debt. So, when I, when we adjusted the debt, the Board of Selectment's policy is the excluded debt to always appropriate the same amount every year. And so, when we, I adjusted the debt, when the trust bonded, and I received the final debt, you know, the final debt schedules, we still had an additional money in the levy, so we could raise up to that 10 million mark. So, we didn't lose that window. And that's really what it came in. So, when you, when you look at the increase in the operating budget, it's a great question. But really what the offset is, is the levy, because we want to make sure that we're going to raise that amount every year to make it affordable. So, that's really what it was.
Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I just wanted some clarification. I know we took some money, according to your memo, it says out of the health insurance budget.
That's correct.
Not out of the reserve account?
No. So, let me explain that. And when I, when I, when we assembled the budget in December, you know, we're always looking at estimated, you know, health insurance rates, and then we're looking at estimate, estimated appropriation or an assessment for upper Cape tax. So, there's always some movement, and sometimes it's an estimated assessment from retirement. When the health insurance rates came in and we looked at it, we still had a little bit of room that we felt comfortable with, so we could decrease the health insurance budget of the projected budget when we came in front of the board and able to move that money over to the other line items. And it's usually, you know, an estimate at that point, and again, state aid comes in in January. So, these are, you know, adjustments we make through the process.
And these are now things in the Finance Committee's recommendation, so we actually don't need to approve these changes. Just to make sure we have the information, so that when we go to the town meeting or go to precinct meetings, we're able to defend why their changes from what we originally see in January. Thank you very much for the information. It's very helpful to make sure we have that.
You're welcome.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, and if I could just note in support of Jennifer and of course Patty O'Donnell here, our, O'Connell here, our treasure collector, we have several members of the Finance Committee, including the Chair and Vice Chair, who have been undertaking a very rigorous budget review process, as we know, for FY 17, and Jennifer's summary is representative of their hard work that goes on each year. We're pleased that they can present that and update the board, so I want to know all those that attend.
Well, I just wanted to comment too on thanking Jen and the Finance Committee for letting us know what your changes are and why. That's really helpful. I'm not sure that I recall we had that level of detailed information coming back to us. So, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
I just wanted to thank Andy Vogel for the letter that she put in the front of the warrant book. But I thought it was an excellent letter, and I appreciate the wording and the sentiments that you passed on there. It certainly was a team effort, and that's reflected in the letter there. So, thank you for that.
Any other questions, discussions? I think we're all set with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Next item, we're some licenses. Before we get started, I just want to disclose that I am a member of the Quixia Club, which is applying for a one-day liquor license. I'm not going to be heavily involved in that event, but in case there's any concern. We do have a one-day liquor license for the Quixia Club on July 29th and July 30th. We also have a one-day liquor license for Matt Gray, Gray Matter Marketing, the Cape Cod Fairgrounds, on Saturday, June 11th, 2016.
I move approval of one and two. A and B ready?
A motion, second of those two?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Next, a request for a change in Sunday hours of all alcohol common victual license. This is the Just One Bite Restaurants, doing business at Parkside Market. And this is to move to the 11:00 hour on Sundays, which is approval that we are actually kind of required to allow when they changed the laws last year. But they still need to come for us for the official approval on that. Move approval?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Next, the approval application for an entertainment license for the Grand Reopening Event of the 99 Restaurant and 30 Davis Straits. This is a one-day event from 4:45 to 7:30 on March 24th, 2016 only. They'll be closing for a few days, adding some new booths, and then opening up. And I'd like to have some live music at that time.
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Do we have anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. And that will be coming up in a few days. Next, under administrative orders, we have the draft and scope of services of the operation management of the Church Street parking lot. If you remember, that under the lease that we have with the Steamship Authority, there are going to be 45 spots that are going to be available for Witsall businesses and residents and employees. And we have an RFP to figure out who we could get to come forward and actually manage the use of these spots. Because they are town property, we have to make sure we go through the process that is handled correctly to actually legally distribute these spots. And so, you have the polls in front of you that we need to approve, so we can send the RFP out and get some response to it. Any discussion? Mr. Patterson?
I've got a couple of questions. In terms of ticketing, for those people who are in violation, will the police department still handle that process?
They will not be, they won't be ticketed, they can't get in there without a pass.
Oh, I see.
So, it's not going to be ticketed in the lot. It's, they will not be getting in.
Some sort of gate arrangement?
Yeah.
And then they'll be charged according to how much time they're in there, or is it strictly a pass? You've got the right to park in that area or not?
You have the right to park in that area.
Thank you.
It'll be limited where you can park in there, and you'll lose the pass if you're parking a place that's not allowed.
Heather, add?
Heather?
One of the key functions of the board, of course, is the overall intent of the project, as well as what the financial expectations are. And this sets an expectation of a payment of no less than $200 a space per year. And that's really where the board wants to weigh in. This really is as much a management issue as it is revenue producing, so that sets a minimum threshold. And if the board has any concerns about that, this would be a good time to discuss it.
Mr. Patterson?
Can I follow up on that? Is this supposed to be a break-even as far as revenue is concerned and the cost of a contractor to manage this?
It's a minimum revenue that the town's going to get for the.
Oh, I see.
Person managing it, they may be able to make some more, but I think it's really, we're not expecting it to be a major moneymaker for someone running this. It's the benefit that they may be able to provide to the town. We don't see it as someone's going to be making a lot of money, and we can actually restrict that. From a break-even point of view, it's trying to balance out what we were making from the lot beforehand with the way the lot's now going to be run, with some revenue coming from the Steamship Authority and some revenue coming from this package. And that's why the 200 times 40 or 45 is important for the board to be aware as to what that revenue is going to be. Thank you.
Sure. Is this just for one-year period?
It is.
Five years with a renewal.
Yes.
Okay, so I just, you know, I think we had 10 meetings, I think, with the Steamship, who I really want to compliment for working hard to bring this benefit to the business community. I just wonder whether we want to. community. I just wonder whether we want to kind of revisit this, maybe be four or five years, as to the amount that Heather pointed out. I think two hundred is, you know, very, very minimal in terms of the amount for the benefit that could occur here for both the businesses and also for the community. And, you know, I think this is going to trickle into a much better flow. So I just wonder if there was any consideration given to that.
Sure. The way it's drafted is, is an initial term of up to five years with an option for a five-year renewal. So it could be a one- or two-year initial term with a five-year renewal, one year. It's a little bit flexible. If the board has any thoughts on it being a specific term, it's really up for the board to discuss.
I think maybe the question might be, is it sixty annual payment of no less than two hundred dollars per space per year to, maybe to parenthetically say, to be reviewed after the first two years, that amount that-
That satisfies my concern. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
And I guess I also wonder whether we want to actually have a contract that goes out five years and not have more of a kind of a probationary period to make sure that we're comfortable with the party that's going to manage the lot. It seems like a five-year commitment is something we might not want to lock in, but have the ability to extend it for another three years.
It's not as much. The Steamship Authority is actually still going to be managing the lot.
They are.
It is merely managing the employees' access to the passes to get them into the lot.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the edit I suggested for the initial two-year period, or actually suggested by the Chair.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None in the ayes, have it. All right. Next, we have a hearing, a seven-thirty PM hearing, the application for alteration of licenses premises and a change of manager and new officer-director, SIACA Incorporated, doing business as Astoria La Chivetta, 133 Main Street, for the applicant.
The applicant, Paul Glenn, from Glennlar Offices for SIACA, doing business as Astoria La Chivetta.
Let me just read into our official hearing notice. The notice is hereby given on Chapter 130 of the General Laws, as amended, that SIACA Incorporated, doing business as Astoria La Chivetta, has applied for an alteration of license premises, change of manager and new officer-director of its all alcohol common victual license, located 133 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. A meeting, a hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, March 21st, 2016, at seven-thirty PM on the above application. Mr. Glenn?
I have other copies of the building plans, if anybody would like. Elijah said the part of the application. Would you like me to remove?
Take that.
Thank you.
I think we-
Thank you.
I think I've got one.
Oh.
I think we-
Thank you.
I think we-
Thank you.
I think I've got one.
Oh.
I think we-
Thank you.
I think I've got one.
Thank you.
I think we-
Thank you.
I think I've got one.
Thank you.
I think we-
Thank you.
I think I've got one.
Thank you.
I think we-
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 I would ask, just for my own clarification, do we have a minimum sidewalk width in front of this kind of cafe seating?
Over here.
Is there a requirement for that in town? That's, I'm really asking for some guidance here.
I'm a little concerned about that, where the tree is and how much handicap accessibility there is between the tree and that entranceway.
In, in the side?
On the front.
On the front.
Right now, we're dealing with the main, the front.
Just the main street side. Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking for-
On the main, well, the tree really, the tree's been there. The benches have been there. It's out, it'd be a public tree. That's right out.
But you're asking us to license the tables in front. They've not been licensed in the past.
They have not been licensed.
And as Patterson's saying, to agree to licensing, he wants to make sure that we're not blocking off that sidewalk with those tables from handicap accessibility, because if the tree weren't there, then certainly the sidewalk's widened off. If the tree is there, I'm not sure there is enough width there to actually make it possible for someone to get by in a wheelchair.
This has been heavily scrutinized by the building department, every part of it. And the, I haven't worked so much with that. The architect, John Keenan, did a nice job doing all this. And they, they're still working on pulling the building permit. That would, that would have to be addressed if, if there was anything like that.
I know when we, the tables were put in front of Nejo, they also had to put up a gate, a chain, a fence to separate the restaurant area from the actual sidewalk. Is there intent to do that here?
You're the Board of Selectmen. If the, if you would like that. Nejo's a little bigger. It's a little different type of restaurant. So this is out front, there are eight seats maximum, only when the weather's right. I don't think they're planning on putting any heaters out there. And it really is just a restaurant. So there'd be very good grounds for distinguishing the, the two places. But I, I don't think they'd be against that, you know, separating there. I think it'd lose a little bit of the feeling that they're trying to achieve. You know, if, if there were thirty people out there, one thing, if there are eight people out there, and they, they don't do a business during the daytime. They just don't do that type of business. It's a more, it's just a formal dining, sometimes formal, sometimes casual dining. But it's not a, it's not a place where you go meet and have a drink out in front.
And the only thing separating the sixteen on the side from the road is a terrace.
Well, that's, that's well separated, sure.
By just a brick terrace. There's no fencing or anything on that side.
Well, there's a, no, you, there's a solid bush there. You can't, they're going to want to make sure people can't get out there.
Yeah. Okay, but that's not listed on the plans.
It's not listed, no, but you can kind of see the door.
Okay.
If I, if I look at this correctly, as you are on Main Street, the distance from the front of the building and the main entry, where you have the four tables, well, that isn't quite half to the distance coming over to the curb. So you really do have a large area for people to walk by, because these tables are closer. So if you take that distance from the front of the building to the curb, and then you see the placement of the four tables, it's really utilizing half of it, as I see that.
Yeah. Well, I'm-
So it's not as if the tables are closer to the curb. They're closer to the building.
And I, I think too, if it, if a fence really isn't required, I would think the Building Commissioner would somehow rule it, rule on whether there needed to be a fence or not. I, I don't think a fence is appropriate unless it has to be there for some safety reasons. So I would rather see us, if we need it, to refer to the Building Commissioner rather than deal with that. I think the, the more, the more open it can be, I think the, the better it is.
I think that's right. Yes.
Yeah. I, I agree with you that, I think it's, in this end of Main Street, the traffic, the pedestrian traffic is, is much slower. I go to the bank a lot, and I don't see an awful lot of people going back and forth. So I don't think we're going to see the congestion of pedestrians passing these tables that we would in Nejo's, for instance. So I just think that-
Where I get concerned is the next block down.
Yeah.
We're now having a bunch of tables and sandwich board signs, and it gets quite congested there.
I agree.
And they're going to say, well, you've allowed these people to put their tables out. How can you restrict us putting our tables out? I actually stopped and talked to some of the businesses last week, because there's an adronic chair. If you sit in that adronic chair, you're now blocking almost two-thirds of the sidewalk. And we're not regulating that yet, but I do want to make sure that we're thoughtful about this. Mr. Glenn, you originally said that there were originally eighty-three seats licensed for this business?
Well, originally, they've taken this in increments. They had half of the building till 2009, and that was like forty seats. And then we expanded in 2009 to eighty-three seats. And so that's, that's what exists now.
And so, right, I mean, we, we don't see the existing layout for eighty-three seats on our plan here.
I, I, I have that. That's already, that's been, was approved in 2009. I thought someone might ask for that. I do have it if you'd like.
It must be much more comp-
Sure. Sure. I mean, it, it fits.
Dense than, than what we're seeing right here. It must be, so you're saying that in, in inclement weather, the tables may be moved in?
They may be. I, I wouldn't, they may. So we have four and two under this. I think it's six and four, right up front. And, and that, that works. I mean, that, that was scrutinized in '09 by the, by the Building Commissioner. I mean, he's not, he's not doing that. I mean, he's not, he's not doing that.
We're sticking with sixty-two inside, and this plant, well, it's a sixty-one and sixty-two in two different places, so I guess I wanna make sure that...
I, I think what we're doing is we're asking the Board of Selectmen to license the premises. And then the Building Department, you can't have them all right by the door. The Building Department regulates them even by room, right? You know, they, you can have so many seats in each room, and, and you can be at your capacity, below your capacity, but in a particular room, you might be above your capacity. So the Building Department, the Fire Department regulate that pretty heavily. You know, with, with the sidewalk, very few of the places on Main Street own part of their sidewalk. You know, I haven't done a study of it, but that, that, this would be unusual, where somebody would have room to do that. And they can't put a chair out on the sidewalk. You know, we're not asking, we're not asking for any part of the sidewalk to be licensed. Yeah, I don't know if you could even, but we're just asking for that that stays all within the real estate that they own, our control.
I just wanna clarify what you just said. You're asking for the sidewalk that is owned by the restaurant to be licensed?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the side.
Right. Could you explain the wood deck's purpose? Is there gonna be a gate there to, I guess I'm just a little bit, wanna make sure that we're...
The wood deck. Well, that, that will be only used by the kitchen staff.
Okay.
Right? Yeah. Why they use wood, I don't know, why they use wood deck instead of something, something else. But they'll be, it is outside, but there's still, there are not so much exits from these two.
There must be a way of getting into the restaurant for the restroom use from the outside, though.
They, they don't want, they're not planning on that.
They're not allowing their customers to use the bathroom? I believe they must be.
Oh, no, they'll all enter within the building.
Through the front, to the main door?
Through the main door, yeah.
And then how do they get to the terrace?
There's a, there's the entrance right up front between, with the existing bar now and the existing chairs.
And that's the only way you can get actually to the terrace, otherwise to the kitchen?
That's the way customers, the only way customers, you know, so that's a total of fourteen seats outside. You know, it's not a, it's not allowed. The kitchen staff would have two, another way to get out there, right there. And it's, I don't think there are any fire issues there. They're outside, and they have two ways to get back in if they wanna do, but...
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Staircase for the wood deck, purpose of that?
Um, I, just the slope.
Is that going down to a trashcan, or?
Well, it's going out to the back. So that's pretty, if you can picture it there, it's between John's Shoe Store and, and that building right there. That goes down pretty steep down to below it there. So to get, just to get down, yeah, just it's another way to get out of the restaurant, I suppose, or to take things down to the trash or whatever.
Again, we're talking about it's gonna be employee use, not...
Employee use.
Right.
They, they don't want, they don't want anybody going out that way, yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
Anyone from the public who'd like to speak in behalf of this project? Is anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Hearing, no one from the public liking to speak, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to second.
Motion to second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The hearing is closed. We have three things to decide. We can do an all-in-one motion if you'd like.
Mm-hmm.
So we have an application for an alteration to the premises, a change of manager, and a new director.
I move approval of all three changes.
Second.
We have motion to second. Any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay.
Is there timetables to when this is gonna be done?
When are you gonna open, Paul?
They want us to work April 1st.
Oh.
You know, you need good weather for it to sit out there.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an eight, seven forty-five public hearing. County Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77, the wetland regulations they found with zoning by law, and Section 57 of Chapter 130 of Massachusetts' General Laws, the application of Glenn Chamberlain, a fifteen Durham Road, East Falmouth, Mass, for a shellfish aquaculture license. The application was received on February 19th, 2016. In the Office of Board of Selectmen, the public hearing will be held on Monday, March 21st, 2016, at seven forty-five in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. Legal description is a shellfish aquaculture permit for one location, East Falmouth, within the town waters of Nantucket Sound, containing 1.1 acres, roughly 416 feet from the shore and 110 feet from the nearest navigational channel. The near shoreline is at the southwest corner of Washburn Island. More specifically, as follows: to grow eastern oysters and northern cohogs in cages and soft mesh bags anchored to the bottom of the ocean in less than twenty-four inches in height. A copy of the aquaculture license application is on file at the Office of the Board of Selectmen. And this is the first process that we would approve and then send this on to the Marine, Department of Marine Resources to, no.
Division of Marine Fisheries.
Marine Fisheries for their surveying of the site.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Glenn Chamberlain. I'm a biologist in town working for various statistics, and I'm interested in starting a shellfish farm in town. Dive right in. So the proposed site, as you mentioned, is in East Falmouth, in the waters of Nantucket Sound. It's about 400 feet from shore. The nearest shoreline is the southwest corner of Washburn Island. I'll display a map on the next slide that'll show you more specifically where that is. The site itself is bounded on the western border. The remains of a man-made rock groin, so a rock wall that was at one point attached to the shore, but the shore behind it has eroded. The groin separates the site from navigational channel. The east side of the site is similarly bounded by a second rock groin and an existing shellfish farm that was approved several years ago, I believe, four or five years ago, which is run by Matt Weeks. Mean water depth at the site is between four and seven feet, so it's mainly workable, higher low tide with dive gear or waders. The site is, proposed site is 1.1 acres. It's roughly rectangular in shape, it's not quite a perfect rectangle. So this is a larger snapshot of the site, so you can see it's at the southwest corner of Washburn, where Yil River empties out. And this is a blow-up of the site itself, so like I said, not quite a rectangle. This is from Google Earth, so you can check it out online if you're curious. And this is the Weeks' shellfish site around that second rock groin. There's also a third further off to the east.
Can you show on that where the channel marker is that you referred to in the application?
Sure. So it's not really marked in this map, but the channel itself runs roughly through here, so it's the exit from, from Yil River.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So criteria that I chose the site was based on the following topics. So it's located in an area with low marine traffic, with existing man-made hazards, so basically even though boats might exit McCoy and the Yil River through that channel, they're not gonna try and get through the rock groin and cross that site. And then the ground itself in between is uneven, so it varies from shallow to deep. There's an absence of yil grass. There's an absence of commercial fisheries or shellfish populations in the area. There's really nothing growing there in a quantity that would make somebody wanna go out there and catch shellfish. It's near to an existing shellfish farm that's been approved, with an approved track record. There's minimal recreational use in the butters compared to other available sites in town. Also looking at other sites that aren't taken, basically. You might get a kayaker out there or somebody transiting pass, but it's not an active recreation site. It's fairly protected from winds and tidal action due to man-made structures. Again, it's not ideal, but given the available sites in Falmouth, it's fairly well protected due to those groins and the fact that it's not out in the open, open sound. And then again, it's accessible by small boat via town landings. So let's go over another quick site overview, basically what I plan to do on the site, with the oyster bags that'll be attached in line, and the bottom painted cohogs. So gear itself will be secured based on the experience of Matt Weeks. He's got the site adjacent to one proposing, so he's basically found that it's more efficient to use gear without lines or bungee cords to minimize chafing and wear and tear and loss of gear. Oysters will be stored in bags, so soft mesh bags, and then clipped to a chain that's settled into the sand, so it's not permanent, can be removed in the event of a storm at the end of the season. Each chain will be secured temporarily using auger anchors, the same thing you'd use for a temporary boat. Anchor for mooring. The gear itself, when it's not in the water, will be stored at my house, so not on the beach or anything of that nature, it'll be removed and taken by boat. Visibility, it's the only visible portion of the site, would be the buoys that are marking the four corners of the site, which are required by law. So it's similar to lobster buoy, if you've seen those, they're just small poly balls. The bags themselves, the securing systems will be on the bottoms, you'll be able to see them from overhead, they won't be at the surface. And as I said, these are the buoys which you'll be able to see required by the Coast Guard, the town, and the state, and we marked, so that people know it's my site. Buoy lines themselves, a 500-pound weak link installed, again, by law. And the buoys will also be taken out at the end of the growing season. So preparedness, so in the event Falmouth was forecast to receive a major storm or hurricane during the growing season, I worked to remove the bags, oysters, and buoys from the site one to two days before the storm using my skiff. Gear itself, it moved to my house. Oysters and seed will be stored in an approved facility. After the storm, I'd provide a status report to those that need to receive a status report. And as I mentioned earlier, the gear and oysters themselves will be taken out of the water by the end of December each year. And the reason for that is because I don't want oysters in the water during that time of year, they wouldn't survive most likely. Undersides or unsold oysters will be overwintered and then put back in the water in the spring time, following the spring. The cohogs themselves remain planted year-round as their bottom dwelling mosque. So support, there's a lot of support on the Cape and nearby, so Cape Cod Extension is a program that's available for advice and new techniques. Roger Williams is nearby and has a great staff that's always helpful to growers. There's several growers in town that I'm familiar with that are a good pool of knowledge and resources to help out as well. Then there's a lot of available information that's public as well, best practices, manual, growers' associations, and so on. So the advantages of this particular site, so there's real-time motion graphic data available online by the yacht club nearby, including wind data. I live close to the site, I can be on-site in half an hour if anything happens, so it's great for me, it's close by for my family. And then it's favorable growing conditions, so it's been proven as a good site for growing shellfish. So my timeline, just briefly, the next couple of years. Year one, hopefully the spring or summer, you know, purchase oyster seed, the largest seed I can find, is the more viable and have to survive when you're starting out. Set up the gear, put the seed in the water, tend the seed itself twice a week, and divide them as they grow into bags. The clams themselves, once they're planted, are not tended, just leave them there until they're harvested. Oysters will be sold initially through wholesalers until I get my feet under me, and then start marketing my own to get a better price through local markets and restaurants, hopefully. And any remaining oysters, as I mentioned a couple times, removed for overwintering, and the gear is all straight moves this year. Year two, three, and four, basically apply lessons learned from that first year and then scale up, so start small and then build up from there instead of putting eggs in one basket, with the goal of being fully productive by year four. So approvals to date are mostly verbal and letters of support of that nature, as Falmouth DNR, Chuck Martinson's been really helpful. He wanted to be here tonight, but since his regrets. Harbor Master has received an outline and provided verbal support through Chuck, and I've met with the Conservation Commission several times just to make sure all the paperwork is started, started to get rolling in the proper order. Next steps would be, as you mentioned, to have the Division of Marine Fisheries come out, perform a survey, hopefully this spring when the water warms up, check presence, absence of yil grass and shellfish on the site. Then concurrently, hopefully, get the ball rolling with all the other groups that have a stake in the game, so all the different agencies and groups in the state federally. And then lastly, once they've received all those approvals, come back to the Board of Selectmen for a second public hearing. And finally, go back to DMF for a shellfish propagation license. Take any questions.
Mr. Glenn?
Can you purchase a seed on the Cape, or do you have to go off Cape together?
You can purchase it on or off Cape, so the state has a list of approved hatcheries, essentially.
And what size oyster do you usually start with?
So I'd look for the largest seed I could get, just because it's harder to kill them at that size, so a three-quarter inch to an inch if I could find it.
Ms. Webb?
Sure. I just kind of wanna appreciate your presentation, it was very detailed, and it shows how many steps of approval you have to go through. It's really a tremendous permitting process generally. And I also wanna just kind of highlight the fact that this is a perfect example of the blue economy. And, you know, young people in Falmouth, you know, really kind of unique efforts for economic development. So I really appreciate all your hard work for this project.
Thank you.
Ms. Webb?
Tell me about the, the people that are, have recreational boating in that area. How many boats would come near this area?
So it's kind of, Yil River is kind of like a secondary outlet from McCoy, so McCoy Bay itself, go back, is a, you know, sort of a larger recreational area in that part of town.
Yes, this was, yeah, okay.
So, so that, you know, that's McCoy Bay itself, and this is Yil River, so people sometimes will come all the way up and then down to get to McCoy Bay. Sometimes people will come directly out and go out to the sound, so it kind of, kind of depends what your interest is, I guess. If you're going out fishing or what have you, or going to a different part of town, you might come out here and go by, but this area itself, you rarely see people hanging out here. They might pull up on the beach sometimes and sunbathe or what have you, but it's generally not heavily trafficked in that area.
But if it were, because I think Washburn is becoming more and more...
Sure.
Boating and activities, a lot of activities that go on there.
Yep.
And I can just see from your first red circle going right over to, just going right over it, does that create a problem for you?
So you're asking if people are transiting, say, along this line?
Yes, right, yeah, well, and coming right, right, straight across?
Not, probably not, just because of the rock groin is here, so they, they'd have to really wanna go into a specific area to transit it, and there's a second rock groin in line, so they, it's really just a small patch in between the rock walls that's taken up, so they can still go behind it without, without issue. Does that make sense?
They can go behind it without issue, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they go behind it, in front of it, and then it's really between two rock walls, so it's, it's a small patch just in between the walls that were...
So you're selecting that area for the protection you're receiving naturally?
Yes, for the protection and because it wouldn't receive much traffic.
Okay, the much traffic is, is my concern.
Sure, yeah, it shouldn't receive much, if any, traffic. I've talked to Matt, who's got the lease essentially next door, he said occasionally a kayaker comes out to see what, what he's doing, you know, just to check out the site, but usually people aren't.
I think what made me ask these questions is you were talking about four to seven feet deep?
Yep.
I, I'm just thinking about the depth of a boat, and, but you must have looked into all that. You must have asked, how many times do you see boats in that area?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, part-time commercially fish in town, I don't see many boats out that way, anchoring up and hanging out to fish or what have you.
How long have you been going to Washburn Island?
I've lived in town for...
Well, I mean, this area.
Last three-plus years.
Do you see an increase?
Uh, I mean, the summer months for sure, just because that's the time of year it's busy out there anyway. But over that time, no.
I know people that go there on a regular basis in their boats, and they talk about the increase in the number of people and the number of boats that are coming there.
Okay.
And, I mean, they're concerned because they'd like to have a little more space, and they don't have the space they had five years ago.
Yeah, and I mean, this is 400 and, you know, some 400-some-odd feet from shore or two, so they really, you know, they have to, it's a pretty long swim to get out there if, if that's a recreation, if they're going out to the beach and, and hanging out, so it's, it's not abutting the beach directly, I don't know if that's a concern or...
Okay.
Mr. Patterson?
Okay.
If I could just follow on that, I've seen people go into strange areas with runabouts.
Sure.
And, you know, you're talking about cages that come two feet up off of the bottom, and then low tide, it's another just two feet, so that's, clearly, that's gonna be an obstruction. All right, how are you going to mark your plot there to try to warn people to stay out of there?
So there's, I guess, two things with the question. So one, I plan to use mesh bags, I put 24 inches in there just to cover myself in case I ever, you know, wanted these cages down the road, but based on the bottom type, the wave action in that area, I would lean towards using mesh bags, which will be on the bottom, which will be buried in sand half the time until I go out and unbury them. And then they'll be marked by law with the four-corner markers, so you'll know where the site is bounded by those, those corner markers.
Ms. Webb?
Do you, is there anything legal that would happen to a boater if they just came through there? Is there anything that, that keeps them away, or can they just go over that area?
They, they can transit that area, yeah.
They can?
Yeah.
If they wanna fool with all the other things that are there, but...
And the danger would be if their prop hit the bottom.
Sure.
They'd hit, hit your mesh, but they'd already be hitting the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, I guess at that point, they're, they're hitting the bottom anyways, so their motor's probably shocked, because they'll be taking sand and gravel into their motor.
Okay, so there's no legal thing that happens if a boat comes into your area and causes harm?
Not unless they're actively, you know, poaching, taking oysters, that kind of... Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Patterson?
Just out of curiosity, you say you're gonna pull your shellfish out as seed during the winter time?
Yep.
And where will you store them? They have to be in wa, in saltwater, right?
So there's a few, you know, there's a few ways you can do it, I suppose. I could go the expensive route and rent the space of a storage facility, or somebody else in town who's got an approved facility. The way the Americans used to do it was, you know, dig a hole essentially and line it with some sort of insulation, and oysters can, can overwinter in that kind of situation, as long as the temperature's consistent.
Thanks.
How many seeds do you plan on purchasing and put into the black bags?
So the first year, we're looking at, you know, 50,000 oysters, assuming a third of those would probably not make it.
Yeah, okay.
And then, you know, the other two-thirds hopefully would, would make it.
I wanna tell you, you're very well organized.
Thank you.
Each one of the slides kept giving more information, and I'm most impressed with your presentation.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Do you have any idea how long a chain you're gonna put, and how many chains you're gonna put in the first year?
Fairly few, for that number of oysters.
Right.
Maybe three if it ran the whole length of the lease, but I'd probably keep them short and, and short and simple, so maybe six shorter, shorter chains.
Okay. Anyone in the public who'd like to speak on behalf of this application? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this application? Again, this will be, this will be coming back to us for a second hearing. At this point, we're just voting whether we send this to the Department of, I'm gonna get it wrong again, Marine Fisheries, Marine Fisheries for them to do a survey and to give their approval. Comes back to us, it comes back to them again for the actual license, so there will be a chance for people to respond, we'll hear more about it.
So motion to close the hearing? Second.
Motion to second, close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Now that hearing's closed.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and send it to DMV. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Good luck. We'll see you again. Next item is Water and Wastewater Monthly Report from Mr. Jack, our DPW Director. All right, we do have some administrative orders that we need to deal with.
Yeah.
Few things we're gonna take first before we hear from Mr. Aftery and Mr. Jack. Administrative orders, we did the church street parking lot. Just to inform you that we had authorized our town council to come up with a resolution on the Captain Kidd's one-day suspension that we had voted for September. The May 2nd was agreed as the one-day suspension that they're gonna have on Monday, May 2nd, and so we just want to let you know about that, that we had authorized the town council to that if it, just for his sake, I would appreciate if we could have a vote of affirmation of that suspension, with that agreement?
Motion to second.
Motion to second of the affirmation of May 2nd, 2016, of the Captain Kidd one-day suspension. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. And then next, a special event, it's a recurring event, I think this is the third year we've done this, and their notification gets early and earlier in advance. I think two years ago, they gave us four days' warning. two years ago they gave us four days' warning, last year was a month, and now we're up to about two months. This is the 2016 National Safe Boating Week, we kick off search and rescue demo, United States Coast Guard Surf Drive Beach on Saturday, May 21st, I also appreciate that this has been moved to a non-summer beach day, close enough to it when we can yet get some people to observe it, but not feel that we are taking away beach time from our residents and our visitors, so I entertain a motion to approve the kickoff search and rescue demo for the US Coast Guard. Do we have anyone from the Coast Guard to chat with us about it?
I will move approval, second.
Motion says second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Now we're on to Mr. Jack and Mr. Aftery for Water and Wastewater. Who would like to go first?
We're almost there.
Okay.
I brought my thumb drive, so.
Well-prepared.
And I said this at the department head meeting, this thumb drive was a cruiser drive, and I couldn't find it for a month, found it in the dryer, so went through the washer, the dryer, still works.
Little commercial there.
Thank you, and welcome to the first day of spring, with a little bit of snow, so nice being in New England. Okay, project updates, start with the Long Pond Water Facility, almost forty-one million dollars was the original contract cost, was adjusted to forty-point-one, which is about eight-hundred thousand dollars less, completed by February, we're at forty percent, now, since this is near the end of March, we're really almost at fifty percent on the construction of the plant. Paid out fifteen million, three-hundred forty-five thousand, expected completion is May of next year, potential change orders in the wind are four-hundred-and-ten-thousand, of that about three-hundred-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand is for the remediation of the lead-firing ranges. This is the cash flow diagram, so the number up at the top on the right, forty-point-nine million is the original contract cost, those are the light greenish-blue dots going down the screen, the number below it is the adjusted value, which is the hard blue line going across the graph, and of course, the red line with the red triangles are what we've actually paid out, so we're in the eleventh month, and you can see that all those curves are running relatively close together, which is good. Nine structural pores, lot of concrete, again, five-hundred-and-eighty cubic, five-hundred-and-eighty-one cubic yards, so the garage area floor slabs are just about done, the elevated slab, which is something that you've been looking at with a lot of rebar and conduit and wires being laid in, is done, and the wet well for the raw water pump station is done, so on the bottom right there, that is the wet well completed for the pump station, you can see it's up to ground level, last month we were looking at a hole in the ground. The intake screens are nearly complete, we have a diver out there during the month of March in order to finalize everything, but they've already been installed, forming and pouring the walls for the bash-bash tank, you're going to see that in a couple of photographs, same thing with the ozone building, pouring the walls on that, and they already started the structural steel and the masonry on the second floor, which is the final floor, so it's actually pretty impressive. So this is what you were looking at in February, this would be the front entrance to the building coming off of Gifford Street, what you would normally see, now please bear in mind that on this photo here, that these rails that you see up here, that is that elevation forty-eight slab, which is where the floor would be for the second floor, so for the month of February and March, a lot of this area here got filled in, so as you can see on this picture here, the second floor structure is already up, so all the structural steel is up, on the left-hand side over here, you can see the cinder blocks, which are going to be for the masonry walls that are going to be going up now. This is what it was in February for the back half of the building, so we're looking at the other side, this would have been looking northeast from the southwest corner, and these rebars, as well as the concrete here, are the footings for the garage, so the garage area extends the full width of the building here, and here, this is the elevation forty-eight slab, the way it was standing in February, and here we are now. So these are the bollards right here for each of the garage doors, you can see that the area's been filled in, leveled off, the structural steel on the second floor is complete, and then this area back here is where they're doing a lot of the work right now. This was that slab, these are some of the hatches, the diamond plate steel hatches that are over the mixer tanks for the flocculation basins. Back in February, this would have been looking into the pump chamber area, so this whole area right down here, where you see all these openings, that's the pump chamber area. The black area here on the right is the backwash and washwater tanks, there's actually going to be two tanks there on one slab, and it's going to run right down the middle here, one's going to be for the backwash tank when the filters are cleaned and the dirty water goes into that tank, the other one is the water that's actually going to perform the backwash on the filters, but in this next, I'm pointing all this out because in the next slide, you're not going to see that much improvement unless you remember that all of this is going to be below ground, and this here is the basement floor, up here where you see the wood rails, this is where the superstructure or the second floor is going up. So these are the forms for the walls on that backwash tank, and as you can see, they go up and cover the pump chamber area, over here, all the way on the right, is where the clear well's going to go, that'll be an eight-hundred-thousand gallon tank, these two tanks here are two-hundred-thousand gallons each. I think that's where we were. Okay. This on the left-hand side, just looking at that same corner of the building, over here on the right is where the, those backwash tanks will be, over here on the left, these are the walls going up for the ozone building. This is what the ozone building looked like back in January, the backwash tanks are over here on the left, that's where they were being built, and this is what it is now, the walls are going up, I know that doesn't seem very large until you look up here and see the little man standing on the top. These are the primary conduits going into the front of the plant, so this is the main primary feed for the facility, and there are a number of other conduits that are running throughout the facility of similar size and going back to the raw water pump station as well, but these will be below ground, so this is the only time you're going to see them. Raw water pump station, this was back in February on the left-hand side here, this was the original wet well opening here that you see, it was just a big hole in the ground with sheathing around it, this was dewatering equipment on the right, right behind it was another hole, that's where the raw water intakes came in, they were manifoldled together with the valves that'll be able to control the intakes, and this is where we are now. So the actual intake area is completed, and then the building will be going in on top of this, and then the pumps will go down into that chamber. On the left here, this is what it looked like back in January, this is looking west from the east, straight into the end of the building where the pump chambers are, this white slab on the right-hand side would be the eight-hundred-thousand gallon clear well, over here on the left is where those backwash tanks would be built, and these, these are the pump chambers across here, this would have been the basement floor here, and the second floor is going up here. So this is the backwash tanks currently being constructed, they haven't started on the clear well tank yet, but you can see that the structural steel on the last floor is already in. This is a pumper here where it says independent, so that truck will stay on site, but these are the chemi- are concrete trucks to come in, and they feed back into the pumper truck so that they can have the lift boom put the concrete up into the building, and in this particular case, they're pumping concrete into the forms on one of the backwash tank walls, and obviously this guy's from Texas, I guess he likes the Dallas Cowboys, and that is not, that is not the Patriots behind him, I tried to look at that, that's a little teddy bear on that hat. This is a vertical view looking down on the backwash tanks, so these are going to be concrete support columns, because there's going to be a concrete structure going on top, all this is going to be underground. This is the first unit process that is going in, this is a plate settler, after the filters have been backwashed and dirty water goes into the tank, the water comes back into the plate settler to take out the solids in order to be able to use one-hundred percent of the backwash water, so we recycle all of the backwash water used for the, for the filters here, and that's what the plant will look like from the front in the future. Any questions on, on that?
Mr. Patterson?
Yep, the remediation of the rifle range areas, you said that's going to be a, a change order.
Yes.
Will this contractor be doing that work, or are we going to have to subcontract this out to someone else?
This contractor will be doing that work.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
And from a timetable, timing point of view, anything that could be affected by the weather, really, we're now past, everything in the winter, next winter is no longer, we won't be pouring concrete then, or.
You're asking that today.
Correct.
But most of the things that really are weather-dependent are in the initial stages, you don't have as much that gets.
Correct.
Slowed down by.
And next winter shouldn't have any impact at all, so, the only thing, of course, that they do run into problems with periodically is spring, depending on how much we get this spring, so, but most of the, since most of the structure is already up, they have a lot of interior work that they have to do still.
Yes, Mr. Finner, do you have a question?
Yes.
The mic's right here.
Mark Finner in Precinct Six, I'd heard some rumors that the divers on this project were escorted off the property for doing their work improperly or something, is there, it's mostly rumor and speculation, is there any truth to that, and if so, did it have any negative impact on the project itself?
The divers are subcontractors to the general contractors, so they are not directly connected to the town, they had put in the intake structures as well as the piping, as far as being escorted off of the site, I'm not aware that they were escorted off of the site, but I can indicate that we do have another diver in there finishing the job at this time.
Should we move on to wastewater, or do we want to do our other?
We finish it first.
Okay, great.
For wastewater, started out at twenty and a half million for the original contract value, and it's adjusted up to twenty-point-seven million dollars, about three-hundred-thousand dollars difference, we're almost at forty percent as of February, so that puts us at about forty-five percent now, paid seven-point-nine million on the job so far, not going to be final completion until June of 2017, have at least a hundred thousand dollars in potential change orders out in the Maravista area currently pending now, most of it has to deal with, obviously, some of the deeper sewer construction that we have, so there are some, also some adjustments for fuel as well. Cash flow, as you can see, the numbers are running pretty much close together, up on the right-hand corner, that is the adjusted budget, it's twenty-point-seven-two million, the original budget is twenty-point-four-one, so the green dots and the blue line are running pretty close together, the cumulative expenditures are here in red, and you can see that they're also running pretty close to the line, so we're where we need to be for this point in the project. For Maravista, the force mains are nearly complete, which is all of the streets that are south of Iroquois Ave, and there are some smaller areas up in the northern area that have force mains on the end of the sewer mains, the lateral work is ongoing, you're going to see that on the drawing that we have at the end of the presentation, so they're installing predominantly the gravity mains now, I think they only have one force main left up at Iroquois. On the lift stations, we have the Mall Lift Station, the Alphonse Lift Station, so the Mall Lift Station is structurally complete, they're working on the mechanical and architectural right now, working on the masonry walls to make that structurally complete on the Alphonse Lift Station, and we'll be upgrading Robyn's Road Lift Station shortly, all the bypass piping is already in place in order to be able to start that. For Spring Bars, the Spring Bars Road, the gravity line to Maravista was a deep gravity line, that was about eighteen feet deep, and it was proximate to the water, so it was very slow, but they're working their way out to Maravista, and then they're going to be turning north on Maravista and heading up Maravista with the trunk line for the entire area on the gravity, so that'll be starting shortly, and I'll cover that on the next slide. This was, on the picture over here, this was some of the work that they were doing on the gravity line on Spring Bars, and when you see the other picture on Spring Bars, where there's not much of the road left, you can see just how much work they actually had to do, so that, yes.
Is all the gravity work done first, is that completed?
No.
You, you do it by the streets rather than by the type of pump they're going to have?
No, they have multiple crews out there, so some crews put in force main, some crews put in laterals, both low-pressure laterals and gravity laterals, some crews put in gravity mains on the side street, and then their heavy crews put in the trunk mains.
You just mentioned Iroquois, and I believe that's a split street, that some is gra-, uh, gravity?
Yes.
And others are just on the regular?
Yes.
So the whole street will be done at the same time, even though it's two different pumps?
No, not necessarily, as I said, they have different crews that do different work, so on the streets that have both gravity and low pressure, they'll put in the gravity main, and Montauk was a good example of that, crew came in and put the gravity main on Montauk, because that was the, but another crew comes in and puts in the low-pressure main.
Same timeline?
Pretty close, they're pretty close together, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So for Maravista, for March through May, normally I only carry this into the next month, but we're coming up on the summer season, and I did want to make everybody aware that the, some of the bigger parts of the project are coming up now, that are going to affect Maravista itself, so this timeline here is from March through May, they'll be installing the gravity, force mains, and the laterals throughout Maravista, on Maravista Avenue itself, when they get done with Spring Bars Road, they're going to be turning north on Maravista to start installing the trunk main, and that's going to be a deep main right down the center of the road, so it's going to close off Maravista, and the traffic's going to have to be detoured. Then they're also going to have crews putting in the connector mains, which are the side streets, and then after the gravity main is in on Maravista, for one or two days a week during this period all the way up through June, they may have to detour traffic to one lane on Maravista in order to connect the side streets into the Maravista manholes, so that won't be that bad, but the trunk line going down from March through May, they're going to have to close down Maravista in order to do that. For Route 28, same thing, they've got a crew that's going to be working from the Alphonse Lift Station on Alphonse Street down to the Admiralty, they'll be installing two mains there, a force main and a gravity main, and that'll complete the Route 28 area, main street area, this has no impact whatsoever on the construction that's going on at Jones Road, that main is already in, and I'll show you that on one of the pictures here, but they're also going to be doing that this spring. Falmouth Heights and Spring Bars areas, paving restoration is going to start this spring, so virtually all the roads in Falmouth Heights are going to get a facelift to some degree, roads that were in good condition and had minimal disruption on the paving for the construction will have trench restorations, those that have major disruptions will get overlays, then for the lift stations, working on the structural, architectural, and mechanical components, and I'll show you some of the pictures of that. So on Spring Bars, this was one of the deeper trenches that they were doing, and you can see the, a lot of the road rift here was ripped up on this, this was just after they had installed one of the manholes, and this is what's left of that area of Spring Bars, and for reference, this is from the east looking west, that is the lift station, new lift station at the mall on the right-hand side up there at the top, so there's very little actual road left, if you will, but that's because there were gas mains, water main, and sewer mains that had to go in on that road, so there was a lot of work that needed to be done on Spring Bars. This is standing in front of Stop and Shop, from the Stop and Shop side of the road, looking east down toward the Admiralty, so you can see the yellow line in the middle of the road and that trench going right down there, that was the gravity main that went in, serving all the way up to the Admiralty, so that's why it won't impact the construction for the state in that vicinity, when they do start, they'll be picking it up all the way up here at the Admiralty and then taking it on down to the lift station. This is the Mall Lift Station in February, this is what it looks like today, they're also doing some mechanical work in the wet well, this is the mechanical work that they're doing, they're putting the piping in, the wet well is where the wastewater will enter, and it'll get pumped out of there and pushed up to the other lift stations. This is the Alphonse Lift Station, and no, that is not, that is not the roof going up there, that is really just for cover on top of the exterior staging areas, if that was a roof, that's a pretty bad job. This is where we were in February, so the yellow lines represent mains that were in, so you can see that all of Falmouth Heights here, that area was done, the black line represents the service area where the contract is taking place, over here on the Maravista Peninsula, you can see these are all the force mains that have been installed, all the yellow lines here, there were three gravity mains, one on Cedar, we have Montauk and I think Harrington here, and then this here is Spring Bars coming up to the creek, and this is on the other side of Spring Bars heading out toward Randolph. The blue represents service connections that have also been installed off of the laterals, that's why the Falmouth Heights area is complete, all mains and laterals are installed, and now this is where we are today. So you can see they've made significant progress, all these laterals are now in, in the Maravista Peninsula area, this is Spring Bars where they put the gravity main in, up here, they have two more streets that were installed up here, for a total of five gravity streets, this is the last, coming up to the last of the pressure mains that are going in, and then all the rest of this is gravity. So after they come off of Spring Bars here, they're going to head north on Maravista and complete this, and then head south in order to complete that, then they'll be working to bring all of these and connect them into that main over their main engine. I did have one statement about one of the lift stations, Chivers Pond Lift Station, because we are coming up on the summertime. because we are coming up on the summertime, that the contractor, and it is the same contractor that's doing those lift stations, Robert Auer, has been working on that. They'll be, they're actually going to be substantially complete with that station this month, all right? It'll be totally complete around the end of mid, end of May. But as far as the parking that they're occupying over there, that should be within the next couple of weeks, as far as being able to restore the parking for the summertime.
Mr. Patterson?
Can you give us a little bit of an overview on the change orders that you've got listed here?
For which project?
Oh, I'm sorry, for the sewer service area.
Okay. One of them has to do with the fuel costs, because we've had to adjust for that, not only on this one, but for some of the others. There is SCADA, there were utility conflicts, and that's where the bulk of the change orders are on the utility conflicts.
So, this is interference with gas lines and water lines?
Yes.
And these were just because we didn't have adequate ASBIL drawings for where these were located?
No, you're always going to have that, even when, even when they're adequate. Given the depth of some of these mains going in, the trench gets necessarily very wide.
I got you.
All right? And a lot of them, the older the water and/or sewer, water and/or gas services are, then the more fragile they are, the more difficult they are to work with. And some of them, because of those ASBILs that you're referring to, are unmarked. So, we had several of those happen in Falmouth Heights. And then some of the mains, even the water mains, are fragile, so.
Could you just give us another thumbnail sketch of this SCADA system and what its value is going to be to monitoring the whole system and to the employees who are responsible for it?
SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. It is literally the lifeblood and heart of the control systems for both the water and the wastewater. When all is said and done, this year, we're going to have very sophisticated water systems, very sophisticated sewer systems that literally, through a SCADA system, can control themselves. So, the operators, if they, if they chose to, would be able to literally run the plant from a computer at home. All aspects of the system that we program into it will have high and low cutoff points. If they go outside the parameters they were scheduled for, they will set off alarms, they will make phone calls, and physically call operators, and give the operator the information as to what the problem is. They're capable of shutting themselves down automatically. So, don't get me wrong, I'm describing a fail-safe system, all right, but nothing is totally fail-safe, but it is a much more sophisticated way of managing modern treatment plants in order to try to make sure that we stay in performance and compliance, and that we get the most efficient operation out of the plant as possible. In the old days, you would come in in the morning, you'd have to physically go around to each site that you had in order to look at paper charts that were on the wall to try to figure out what the system did overnight. And that's only good for the components that were on a paper chart. Today, virtually everything in that building, wherever it may be, is being sent to a mainframe computer and coming up on a SCADA system, and you can see everything from everywhere right there on the screen. So, it's very, very efficient, very effective.
Sounds like a perfect segue to Mr. Rafferty.
Yes, and Mr. Raff, is, yes. Mr. Rafferty just had a short announcement?
Right. As you recall, back in December, I came before you, we sampled on a quarterly basis for disinfection byproducts at eight locations in the system. When I came before you in December, for the total trihalogen methane component, we went over the reportable limit at Knobsko Road. Reportable value is the average of the preceding three values plus the most current value. We did the first quarter sampling, and we once again are over the limit for the Knobsko Road location. That puts us into public notification, as we did before, come before your board, Board of Health, add in the paper, and a mailing to all of the people in town who are our customers. Just to, real quickly, the disinfection byproducts occurred because of the amount of chlorine that's added, the amount of algae that's present in Long Pond, and the amount of time it takes for the water to get to the individual customer. At two of the locations we sampled, Black Hill Beach and Knobsko, they are some of the longest residence time on the water. We can't change that value, we did some flushing work to try to improve some things. We can't really change the algae in the pond, the algae's in the pond. The one thing we have in front of us now is to perhaps change the amount of chlorine we're using, and that's the step we're going through now to see if there's any way to adjust that through conversation with the state. The solution is, as Ray just pointed out, we are on schedule, we are tracking within a year to have the new plant online. That gets rid of the algae, because the new plant will get rid of the algae, the numbers will come down. Across the rest of the town, the average value still remains between about twenty and thirty-five against the limit of eighty. So, every place else is still actually, as we expected, seasoning for the number to go down a little bit. And in fact, the individual value at the Knobsko location went down a little bit, couple of, couple of parts per billion, but the long-term running average remains slightly above the eighty parts per billion level, so we have to go through the public notification process again, do our best.
Is there any possibility of a localized treatment, rather than upping the chlorine so much at the origination point, which I imagine would be really evident?
The answer is yes, but by the time you could engineer that, implement it, and initiate it, and get the values back down, the new plant will be online already, so. We're looking more now at back where we're actually putting the chlorine in at the wells and the treatment plant. Given that the residual we carry to the system is a very good residual, making a request to back down on the chlorination level we're at, which, for those of you who were around during the boil water order, that number came up quite a bit in response to the boil water order, and absent of making a request to bring it back down, which will happen with the new plant anyways, but I'm going to try to get on an interim basis some relief on that.
And just to, no, exactly, a follow-up, but where I get a lot of my good information, which is on Facebook, there were some complaints about brown water in East Falmouth, I'm wondering if this had anything to do with it, number one, and secondly, everyone wants to know when's it going to stop, what can I do?
Okay. The brown water in East Falmouth has nothing to do with the sampling, first off. The brown water in East Falmouth was by and large a reaction to a couple of fairly substantial water main breaks. We got that very, very cold day on Monday, and we spent the rest of the week when the weather got warm again chasing down a couple of big leaks. A year ago, we started the flushing program beginning in East Falmouth through Seco Shores. We got rid of a lot of brown water complaints there. It's a good segue, in the next week or so, we'll be putting our sign up again. We're going to start at the Hayway Road Tank and begin flushing again in East Falmouth, coming down, trying to get down Central all the way to Knobsko this spring. And as we do each area, we'll reduce with time, when there's a break in the water line or a disruption, the amount of brown that slushes back and forth from the accumulated sediments in the pipe.
Thank you.
What should the residents do about the Knobsko area, if they're concerned about it?
First off, the disinfection byproduct exceedance is a, a public health concern, but not an immediate public health threat. But for anybody that's got a concern about that, the easiest thing to do is to use some form of a carbon filter, a Brititite filter. It's highly effective at knocking down the disinfection byproducts in the short term.
And I think I remember the last time, the biggest threat is for pregnant women taking extra-long showers was where they, is a potential danger.
Or to help actually put that advisory out, it's not an official EPA position, but there is data that shows that for pregnant women, it would be a reasonable caution not to take a long hot shower in water that has high TTHMs.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, can I ask a quick question? In this flushing process, do you actually take the caps off of all of the fire hydrants? Because I know we had a problem with them not being able to get a cap off of a fire hydrant not too long ago.
So, I'm not going to say we take them off of every hydrant, but just virtually every hydrant, because it's a unidirectional flushing program, that we go down the street and we do take the caps off the hydrants, lubricate them, put them back on. I think you're referring to a certain incident that happened in the last flushing program, we actually got to the hydrant immediately around the corner, and I talked to the fire department, that hydrant was perfectly accessible. The other hydrant is really a case of you've got to put enough force onto a hydrant, they're bronze, so they don't really rust on, you just have to do it, put the force on to get them open. But we do go through, lubricate it, put a flag on it, if it doesn't have a flag, and with luck, now that we are up to a staffing level I'd like to be at for this year, we'll get around to painting something for the summer.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next item on our agenda is a discussion of the water selection grinder pump policy. We're going to hear from Amy Lowell, as the Acting Wastewater Superintendent.
Ray, I actually have a presentation over here as well.
There's some options for us to consider.
Hi, I'm Amy Lowell, I'm the town's Acting Wastewater Superintendent, and I wanted to talk today, as Doug had said, about options for maintenance of the grinder pumps in the Little Pond Sewer Service Area. To start with, what the, what the status is right now on grinder pumps. The town will be providing one E1 grinder pump to each single-family residential property owner that's on the low-pressure system. The town went out to bid, and E1 was the selected bidder, and the total value of that effort is a little less than two point five million dollars. That's about seven hundred properties that will receive a grinder pump, and each one is worth about thirty-four, or thirty-four hundred and fifty dollars. The property owner will own the pump and contract with a plumber to install that pump. The installation cost will vary depending on the distance, you know, the layout of the property, depth to water on the property, the other features on the property, like landscaping, decks, all kinds of things that are on people's property can affect what it takes to get under, under them. The installation cost for the low-pressure connection may or may not be more expensive than the cost for a gravity connection on average, and we can talk more about that today, but I think that, you know, there are a lot of costs out there, people are, people are getting preliminary costs, and some low-pressure costs look high, some gravity costs look high. To me, it does not appear that it is clear that one type of connection will be consistently more expensive than another. So, I think more discussion might be warranted on that in the future. Let's see, this doesn't look as good as it did on my computer, but on the back of this truck is the exterior grinder pump, so it's, it's about eight feet tall, and that unit, as you can see, it's a cylinder, and the pump is in the lower half of that cylinder, and that cylinder will get buried in the ground and then connected via a four-inch line to the house and via a one-and-a-quarter inch line to the service lateral of the street. The other unit, looks like half a bathtub maybe, is an indoor grinder pump. We don't expect as many of these to be installed as the exterior, as the outdoor grinder pumps, but it is an option for properties with a basement, in particular, an unfinished basement. I wouldn't recommend the indoor unit in an, in a finished basement, because you're doing maintenance on the pump in your basement. But just to show you a picture of what they look like. Grinder pump maintenance options, as the outline, or the four main options here are, number one, to continue as, as originally envisioned, which is the property owner is responsible for maintenance of the pump. And I will talk more, I have a slide on each of these options, and I can, we'll talk more about what they mean. So, the property owner is responsible for the maintenance of the grinder pump. The option two is the same as option one, but the town would pay for an extended warranty of ten or more years. That is not an option I can guarantee is available, but it's something we're looking into, I'll talk a little more about that. Option three is the same as one or two, except that the town could also consider giving property owners with grinder pumps some additional financial support to offset the maintenance cost of the, of the grinder pumps. And the fourth option is that the town could consider becoming, taking on responsibility for pump maintenance through an outside maintenance contract. Under any maintenance option, I just wanted to talk a little bit now about care for, of the grinder pump system. Thought I'd take the chance while people are listening to talk about care of the system. The first step, and a very important one, perhaps the most important one, is to make sure it's installed properly. We had a training for grinder pump installers in early last month, or early this month, and was very well attended, and it was hosted by, or the training was provided by the rep for the E1 pumps. But there are, there are some basic steps that ought to be followed for the installation, and should definitely get a plumber who has attended that training to oversee that installation. There are a number of materials that should not go down the drain and can cause out-of-warranty problems, things like wipes, there are a lot of wipes that say that they are flushable, and they are not flushable even for a gravity system. One of the main things I want to say is that all the things that we talk about not going down a, into a low-pressure system, also should not go into a gravity system. People shouldn't be flushing flushable wipes, they cause tremendous problems at our pump stations, and they will cause problems with individual pumps. So, grease is a problem for our system, it clogs, it clogs gravity mains, and it can clog, and it can clog the mains on a low-pressure lateral or on a gravity main lateral. So, there, you know, I was talking with a plumber today who recommended anybody with a grinder pump put a sign in their bathroom, the way people put in a lot of rental units that says, "Don't put anything down this toilet unless you have eaten it first," which I apologize if people think that's crude, but it's a basic, good recommendation. And that really is true on the gravity system as well. Things go, people flush clam shells, and all kinds of things that can cause problems with the pump if you have one, or can clog the lateral on your property or in, or in the street. During a power outage, people with grinder pumps will need to limit their water use if they don't have a generator on their property. The tank is a seventy-gallon tank, that vertical tank that I described has seventy-gallon capacity. To be clear, though, if, if that, if the power went out just before that pump was about to come down, that pump was about to turn on, the capacity is even less than that. The worst-case scenario is you'd have thirty-eight gallons of storage in your pump unit, and then there is additional, some additional storage in the gravity line. Most toilets have a one point five, well, most modern toilets have about a two-gallon flush. They can be significantly lower than that still, if you have a low-flush toilet. Older toilets can be five, three and a half to even seven gallons. So, the number of flushes that that gets you depends on the, the capacity of your toilet, but most modern toilets are a two, two-gallon flush. I do want to note that water use would be limited strictly just by the fact that the power is out. Dishwashers are not going to be running when the power is out, clotheswashers are not going to be running when power's out. So, this really is a matter of when the power is out due to a storm or a hurricane or, you know, something along those lines, you'd want to minimize water use, which is, in this case, flushing and showers until that pump, until the power is restored. When you're gone for an extended period of time, you'd want to run clean water through your sewer line. Doesn't have to be a lot, can be a few flushes, or a small bathtub full. Seasonal residents, it's always, already do, a lot of winter shut off anyway, so this is an addition, or part of, can be part of that process. And when there is a pump problem, you'd contact the designated pump representative promptly and limit the water use until it's fixed. Maintenance option considerations, I wanted to bring up a few things about, just when thinking about the four options I discussed. The issue of a precedent, if the town proceeds with option three or option four, option three had to do with the town providing funds to offset maintenance cost, and option four involved the town contracting the maintenance. In either of those cases, I would recommend, considering the precedent of the town bearing maintenance responsibility and/or cost for maintenance of wastewater management on private property. There are already wastewater systems on private property, and the town in general has not covered any of those costs. So, cost of a septic system, obviously, there are maintenance costs of those, the pumping annual, the, every three years or so or more, pumping out your septic system, and there are the costs of, of upgrading septic. and there are the costs of upgrading septic systems. There are also the gravity system costs. Those, you know, include over time, as the systems get older, you can get roots in them, they can get damaged, and there's a cost to dig it up and replace it. The innovative or alternative nitrogen reduction systems that have been put in particularly close to embayments, those can be, can have some operation maintenance sampling costs, and the town in general has not supported those costs or those systems. There are about, I think, five grinder pumps in Woods Hole right now, and those systems were installed by property owners and are maintained by private property owners. So I just wanted to put out there, there is a baseline of wastewater infrastructure on private property, which the town so far has not maintained. There is also a liability consideration of working, town working, or having the representative work on private property, and there's also a cost consideration. So option one, I said, was property, yes, go ahead.
Can I stop you just a moment? I know they're just about to put some denitrifying systems in in the West Falmouth area. Do we have a handle on just what the cost would be for a denitrifying septic system?
Well, it varies quite a bit based on the type of system and where it's installed. I've processed three applications for those lately. So this is a program in West Falmouth Harbor. The Buzzards Bay Coalition was working with the Water Quality Management Committee and got a grant to support installing denitrifying septic systems in properties along the West Falmouth Harbor shoreline. And that grant is paying $10,000 of the cost of installing that, they call it IA, alternative system. The costs that I recall seeing were in the $26,000 range. Is that it for now?
Yeah, no, thank you.
So option one, I'd said, was the property owner being responsible for maintenance. This is the case in many towns. I've heard a couple of people saying that nobody, this isn't the case anywhere. That's not correct. In Barnstable, there are 55 or so grinder pumps that are installed in Barnstable and are maintained by the property owner. There are 60 in Chatham that are maintained by the private property owner. There are also Fall River, Taunton, there are many towns where this is the case. There are also many towns where this is not the case. But I did want you to know, you know, this is an option, this is something many towns do. The town did procure a five-year warranty for the grinder pumps, which is beyond normal. Normally, it's one-to-three-year warranty. The town, with its bid process, procured a five-year warranty. The E1 units are designed to last 15 to 20 years. If there's a problem, the property owner is to call the pump rep, who is required by contract to respond within 24 hours. In the first five years, which is this warranty period, there is to be no maintenance cost to the property owner unless there is abuse of the system, which is not following the care instructions that I talked before. Flushing clams down the drain, flushing drywall down the drain, grease, you know, there are some ways of abusing the system. Or failure to install this system properly. If it's wired improperly, if it's not vented the way it's required, those can require some rework and then get it running properly. So if it's installed and used appropriately, then in that first five years, the labor and the materials are covered under that warranty. And the electrical cost is minimal. I said less than $50 a year. Most people say it's less than $30 or $40 a year. So it's not a significant cost. Excuse me, I already mentioned the care. The extended warranty option is something we have asked E1 and their rep to look into and get back to us on. We have requested a proposal and pricing for an extended warranty, 10 years or beyond, and we have not gotten a proposal from them yet, but they are seriously considering that, and we can bring that back when we get it for consideration. That would obviously be an additional cost to the town, but it is something that we can consider. Option three, offering additional financial support. The town could provide financial support to offset the maintenance costs. So particularly beyond the first five years, there will be some maintenance costs to these, on properties where there is, where there's a grinder pump. So the town could consider, for example, a lump-sum payment after the units are installed, inspected, and the permit for their installation has been called, has been closed out. This option would address the issue of differences in maintenance cost in the long term between low-pressure systems and gravity, but would avoid the potential problems of a town or its contractor doing maintenance on private property. Contract maintenance was option four. So the town can look to a contractor, and there are those out there who will provide service, grinder pump service for the town. We would pay a base annual contract cost just to be available and to provide generator support, which I can talk a little bit more about, plus cost for warranty and normal service calls, plus a cost on top of that for abuse calls. And that cost estimate, the estimated total cost would be about $250,000 to $350,000 a year. The reason it's such a big range is that it depends on what the town actually does see in terms of calls of different types. You're not going to get somebody to say, yes, this number will cover everything. They will say this will cover available, being available throughout the year, and then responding to an estimated 35 calls a year of each type or whatever. So, and the other thing is, this depends on what year you're talking. In the initial years, this cost would be lower, later years, this cost would be higher. The town would need a system and staffing for charging back for abuse repairs. We would need to provide an incentive for people not to abuse their system. This option would provide grinder pump owners with maintenance service at no cost, except, again, in the case of abuse or failure to responsibly install or operate it. The town would be managing the maintenance contract instead of individual homeowners communicating directly with the pump representative about warranty service. This option does, of course, include responsibility, town responsibility for wastewater infrastructure maintenance on private property. In the first five years, if we follow through with this option, the town would be, in some ways, paying the contractor to respond to issues in a double pay, it could be seen as double paying. Right now, we have a warranty for five years. The FR Mahoney, E1's rep, is on the hook to provide labor and equipment cost for the first five years. So we could, we can discuss this option and ways to perhaps reduce the potential for double paying. Paying, we've paid already for the warranty. How do we, how do we reduce the double-paying scenario, double-paying part of this scenario? One of the people, one of the things people have asked about is generator service during a power outage. So we could look to a contractor just for that part, or just for generator service during a power outage, plus a limited other services. Or we could commit to contract maintenance beyond year five, so after the warranty wears out. The generator service, I will say, I was speaking today with Oak Bluffs and Edgar Town, that are two towns where the town actually is responsible for the E1 grinder pump maintenance, and they have never actually gone and run people's grinder pumps with the generator. And they just, they have the capability to do that, but they haven't committed to doing that, and they haven't been called upon to doing that. So I will, I think this is something we could definitely offer and reassure people will be provided, but there are certainly examples of towns comparable to ours where there's not been a big demand for that. And that's it. Any questions or discussion?
Take a questions for Amy?
Very thorough.
And another thing we do have to also throw into the mix, because we've had two different town meeting votes, is the ownership of the pump. We had a vote, I think, a year and a half ago requesting special act of legislation to allow the town to purchase the grinder pumps that they would then give to the homeowner, transferring ownership of those pumps, and town meeting voted that. This past November, we had a town meeting vote which advised the board of selectmen to come up with a policy dealing with ownership and maintenance of the pumps. And so you could look at it, that there are contradictory votes, but we've had, and that is another issue too, that we've been asked to consider as to whether the town would actually own the pumps or not. So these are all things that we do need to consider. I'd be happy to hear from, if we don't have any more questions for Amy, to hear from people in the audience who'd like to give us some feedback on this, we've asked for it.
Mr. Grosser?
Amy, do you want to put the microphone back?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Howard Grosser, precinct two. Question first, if I may. I have something prepared that I was going to read that dealt with your online posting of the policy options, which are significantly different from the options that Ms. Lowell just presented. To me, option four is the only one that makes any sense. I have seven pages of comments about options one, two, and three that aren't necessary if that's the way that you're leaning.
Well, just to give you feedback, what's happened is that in discussion, Mr. Jack, Mr. Suso, and I looked at some options and then directed Ms. Lowell to also come up with what she's seen as her options. So we're just trying to get everything out there on the table.
And perhaps I'll make it very short. I support option four, and I think options one, two, and three would be a disservice to the folks who have to install the pumps, and a disservice to the town meeting members who voted overwhelmingly for that Article 24 that directed the town, or suggested, advised you to take ownership of the pumps.
But I think, Ms. Lowell, just very clear, these are the options we could consider.
Understood.
Mr. Fenneren?
Mark Fenneren, precinct six. When this first came up several months ago, I went to a local Wigan Precast and brought you the cut sheets on a Title V tank, which is the same as a pump chamber. The only difference is the access in the top, but it's not necessary to access them because they pull the pumps up with the cable. If someone were to use their Title V tank, which is perfectly legal, did he give 1,000 or 1,500-gallon capacity, which would carry him for weeks, as opposed to 38 gallons? It wouldn't necess, it would not be necessary to have a generator. I would, and it's completely legal by plumbing code, I would counsel anyone who had a Title V tank to tell the town to keep their pump chamber, buy their own grinder pump, a Zoller or a Myers proven technology, and submit that they would be way ahead of the game. It's entirely legal, and it's cheaper in the long run, and I think everyone should consider that.
Okay. If we could stay on the actual grinder pump policy, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. DeFrain?
Adrian DeFrain, precinct two, resident of Falmouth Heights for about 60 some odd years, and unfortunately, I'm going to need a grinder pump. However, I prepared myself, and I did put in a generator, and so I don't have some of the difficulties outlined by Amy Lowell that will be placed on the 700 kind of senior or semi-senior residents that live in both Falmouth Heights and Maravesta as far as the complications. So I tried to absorb everything that she was saying. She's a lovely gal, speaks very well, faster than my, without my hearing aids that I could make sense of. But what I would like to have is a copy of this available to people who have the need for grinder pumps, so that we can absorb the ramifications and the complications of grinder pump use. My particular house has a gravity system born out of the front of the house and a grinder pump coming out of the back of the house. So I'm ready to absorb whatever cost. My estimates run between $12,000 and $15,000. So I think, because the system that was designed and accepted by the town for the need of 700 grinder pumps, that let's weigh very carefully and very thoroughly the explanation to the people that are going to be impacted financially. I do take into consideration that I have done preventive maintenance on my septic systems for over 50 years, and they run about 600 pumps a year. I used to pump them and clean them and that kind of thing. And that would be a cost that I will incur, or that my home will incur from now on through what the cost of tying into the sewer. So we have to explain this, I believe, to all of the, again, I'm going to say, the elderly people who will be faced with this grinder pump requirement. And I thank the board for giving us this explanation tonight, even though it was a little quicker than I could absorb. And again, I think you guys are doing the right thing. It's a real serious issue for both Falmouth Heights and Maravesta. And with all due considerations of the populations of that, of those areas, I want very careful consideration for the financial impacts of those people.
Thank you. What I also wanted to add in the lump-sum figure that Amy said we could consider is when we really get a cost comparison between what it is to put in the gravity system compared to the grinder pump system. And what my motivation is trying to equalize the cost as much as possible. I'm not worried about the precedent we set outside of this area, but trying to say that whatever the costs are going to be for the gravity-fed system and the grinder pump, try to make that as close to being equal as possible. And so if it really does cost a significant amount more to install a grinder pump system, I wouldn't mind considering an option of saying, is there a way that we can give some money to those people who install it to equalize those costs a little bit? You could either see that as money going towards installation, or, as Amy said, that money could go to future maintenance costs. But again, we have these options in front of us.
On behalf of the people that I represent, I would appreciate whatever considerations that you give the people that will be impacted by this grinder requirement.
Other comments from the public?
It was, Mr. Grosser did send us an email asking us to, maybe at least to make a decision on the ownership of the pumps tonight. I don't want to make any decisions on any of the other policies of this. I think it is something we still need to get some more feedback. Try to get Amy's presentation on the website so people can see what's ahead of them, get back to us, and try to have this discussion. Probably not in our next meeting on the 28th, but the meeting in April, I would love to say we have actually hammered out a policy and can move forward with it. Is the board okay of having a discussion about at least the town ownership of the pumps tonight?
Mr. Patterson?
Well, I just, I just think it ought to be a package. That we ought not to take one step without making sure that we've considered the second step as well. So I feel uneasy, because, you know, if we decided that the residents would not own the pumps, then that's a different service kind of arrangement than if the private property owner owned the pump and we had to somehow rather service private property.
Okay, I have no problem servicing private property, so that's the reason why. I guess I'm okay with the town not, with the private property owning pumps as we voted with the special act of legislation, and are still considering maintaining them.
I agree with Saltman and Patterson.
I think it should be reviewed as a set piece with a further opportunity for public input. And I'm gravely concerned about litigation costs going forward that the town could take on if we were to make that really unusual milestone step of that initial vote. I do think it's integrally related to the entire cost. The precedent is really as to every water quality issue that we go forward in the town. We're really just dealing with the tip of the iceberg in terms of our estuaries and what we may need in terms of further consideration for more oysters or sewer-ing or whichever, you know, we're getting a lot of research and input. I'm on the Water Collaborative for the entire Cape, and the technology and information that we're doing here in Falmouth or in Chatham or elsewhere on the Cape. or in Chadham or elsewhere on the Cape is really going to be used to really make a better system going forward. So I think we really, and certainly people who hear that in this first instance, we made financial decisions to help the homeowners to a, you know, X percentage or a certain dollar amount, they would really be entitled, I think, to argue going forward that the same considerations should be given. So I'm more interested in really getting a set piece, all the information in front of us, and for a little bit more time for public involvement and comment.
See, where I just don't see the precedent being the same is because we are, we have two different systems that we are requiring them to do. And I'm just looking to equalize across those two different systems. And this is one project, the Little Pond Service Area, and we're doing two different methods on it. Future projects, those are going to be their own projects, and that's where I don't worry about it. But I'm, I'm not trying to say that we're going to make any decisions tonight, so I don't, certainly there's going to be more time for some more.
What do you estimate the difference in everything that we've heard and everyone who's given us a report?
The numbers are too vague right now for me to really know what that is. And that's the reason we need, that's more where I need some more information. I have some fellows out trying to get information from different sources. It's ranged anywhere from a difference of five to six thousand between the two, with the grinder pumping more expensive, to some coming in where the grinder pumping, that system was less expensive because they didn't have the same landscaping patio, you know.
Well, I think that's exactly the issue. We don't have any, anything at this point to say, this is this amount for the grinder, and, and then there's so much difference. But it's each household would have a different.
And we're going to, and I think we're going to have to do some averaging and say, okay, this is what it generally is, and it won't be perfectly, completely equitable. But I think any efforts we can make in that direction.
I think we should continue to find out what that difference is.
Well, I'll just add, I think that when we think about this, we're talking about private property, we also, we have to think back to past practices to some degree. At least we have to know what they were or what they are, and what the here and now is, and how that might commit us to the future. So, I mean, it's a, it's a rather large discussion with, with, I think, important impacts that we have to be legally and otherwise. So there's private property, so we do have to take that into consideration.
An answer I know I'll hear from the public is, we do have water meters that are on private property that we do maintain. And one of the things I'm more comfortable with is a outside contractor who has some relationship to be able to go onto the property and will not be the town. I would not really be, I would not be in favor of this being something that our wastewater management team takes up. I'd be in favor of considering a management plan where we have a contract and we hire someone else to do the service and maintenance. But certainly we'll be having some more discussion about that. Is there anyone else who felt they didn't have a chance to speak on this that would like to? Okay. Thank you very much, and please let us, give us some more information as you get it. Next item is discussion update of the senior center site. To give a little bit of groundwork as to where we are with this is, the Council on Aging and the Site Feasibility Group had come to us with a recommendation of the Falmouth High School site being the best place for the senior center. We were supportive of that. We chose a site that would require a new field being built on the school property. The school department has been very supportive of this process all along, but did feel that if we were going to use one of their fields before we could start construction of the senior center, they felt that the replacement field in kind should be built and ready to be used. When we looked into the project at Brick Hill Road, we were given estimates in the hundred thousand dollar range for a new field. When we got some, looked at the numbers more carefully, sent out a consultant, and dug into this more thoroughly, the number came out to the more in the nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, which forced the selectmen to really take a step back and say, wait a minute, that's not the number we were looking at. Could we really proceed with the project in that way? At the time, when we looked at the, the high school site, there was a fourth site there which involved no moving of fields. And we have gotten some more information about looking at that site and trying to get some dollar figures. We have some preliminary numbers today. I just want to have a discussion with the board as to how do we proceed, how far back do you want to go in looking at sites? I felt that we had a feasibility study group who did some very strong work, and their recommendation was very strongly for the geographic area of the high school. Ms. Moffett?
Talk about the fourth site.
It's in the northwest corner of the high school property. It is an uncleared site that is just south of Old Campus Drive, but you cannot access it through Old Campus Drive because when Old Campus Drive area was as near as association, the open space for that development was actually built along the road, cutting off access from Old Campus Drive to the school property. And so to be able to use that site, we would have to build an access road, a new road from Gifford Street Extension over to where the senior center could be.
And what I learned today with Peter McConaty, I think, took a look at that, and said the cost to put a road in there would be hugely expensive because of the terrain.
And a very rough estimate around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Well, and obviously that's still, there's still exact parity with the operational costs. There's no cost sharing because it would be on a separate site from any other of the choices such as near the administration building or Gus Canty.
What is this, March twenty-first, thereabouts? I'm thinking about this project because I know that a lot of decisions are not going to be made before the election on May seventeenth. And I know that sometimes my views aren't always the same as others, but I think what, where I'm coming from is, I think when we look at community needs, no matter whether they're for recreation, for youth, whether it's recreation for older people, whether it's providing for the needs for seniors, that we not put community needs into silos, you know, where we have to have a building or an area or a designated area to meet this need, and then somewhere else we have to have another building to meet that need, or we have to take another need and put it somewhere else. That we really kind of look at community needs in general. I mean, we all know that seniors are living longer than they did twenty years ago, that seniors are far more active today than they were twenty years ago. And frankly, I'm not even sure who a senior is. When does one be, not you, Andy, we already know about you. When does, when does one become a senior? When you're eligible for Medicare, when you're fifty-five and your company says you can now retire, whether you're seventy-five, does that make you a senior? Or what makes, where, where's the sort of the demarcation line that one becomes a senior? Or maybe we just don't become seniors at all. Maybe we just become older adults who hopefully are being as active and mobile as, as we used to be. So anyway, I just think that we should be really taking a look at what people in this, let's call it an age group, and let's not call them seniors. I don't like to be called a senior, you know, I really don't. I'd rather be put into an age group. I'm an older American, and so, so anyway, I think we have to take another look at who, who the people are in this community. And, and we already have said that our demographic is showing us that we have rising numbers of older citizens in town, and that over the next ten years, those numbers are going to increase. And we've sort of had that discussion and said, that's a dynamic that is not sustainable, and we have to do everything we can to reverse that dynamic. You can have a community where seventy percent of the people are older because you won't have enough younger people to provide the services that people in that age group are going to need. So, you know, I'm looking at this as community needs, not as a senior center, but what are our needs as a community? And where do we want our community to go? What kinds of thing, what kinds of decisions can we make that will impact the future, that will allow younger people to come here, that will provide housing for younger people to live here and work here, and then will provide jobs?
I'm going to try and limit our discussion.
I'm not going to stop in about ten seconds, so don't worry about it. But I'm just saying that this is a discussion that I think is going to take time, and that we're not going to solve it tonight. And the community needs to really weigh in as a community, and not just by age group, but by the community as a whole.
Okay. So right now, we're actually just trying to focus on the site of senior center.
Okay, let's do the site.
Well, that's very important.
That we have been, has been researched for the past five years. The recommendation is that we want to build a senior center. The town has already voted for that. Our job is to figure out the location of it. We had already decided on the Brick Hill site. We then changed our mind, backed off when the cost of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the field a few weeks ago. We now have to decide where do we go from here? Do we investigate site four with a projected net range from our town engineer of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And that's a very rough guess that he came after a week. It's less than what the field number is, which is fairly accurate now that we have pinned down, but not, in my view, so much less that it becomes the obvious choice. I do think we have an option of saying we go back and say, well, now we have these numbers, we could go back where we said. We could go Brick Hill, we could go back to town meeting and say, yep, that's the plan we're going to go forward with. We need the nine hundred thousand dollars for this field. We need to ask the school committee to go ahead and transfer the ownership from the school committee to the board of selectmen for that site and move forward with that. That is an option. Or we go back to looking at site four, or we come up with some other site choice. We have made a recommendation with the support of the finance committee of three hundred thousand dollars at this meeting to start our design, including finalizing a site choice. And that is part of what the step forward is going to be right after town meeting, to make sure we have the site well-chosen, make sure we get the project manager on board, make sure we hire an architect and get some schematic designs to present, including looking at the size of a building, including looking at the scope of the work and making sure what our needs really are. Do we need a twenty thousand square foot? Can we get by with a fifteen thousand square foot? What are operating costs going to be? That that's what that three hundred thousand dollars is also going to be getting for us. Ms. Moffett?
Just give me the parameters of the discussion that you would like to hear.
Site.
Site, okay.
Or even what our plan is for choosing a site. Not saying I don't think we can choose a site again tonight, but if that's where the board felt, what schedule and timetable do we want it for considering what the site could be? Ms. Moffett?
Everything that I've investigated and all the folks that I've been speaking with are concerned about the additional cost that was unanticipated. I really don't see enough of the difference in either of the high school sites in terms of being able to move those forward. I really think that we'd be, probably be better served at taking another look at the alternative administrat-- administration building in Gus Canty. That's what I'm thinking.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, and I, that's my understanding, and part of it came as a presentation to the finance committee, that Article Five, which is going to be authorizing three hundred thousand dollars, he's going to go back and take a look at that trade-off study again and see whether this additional cost to the high school sites, with the exception of the, the one in the site four, which sounds like it's not going to be too much different in price, that we really need to go back and look at that trade-off process and see whether we come up with the same conclusion at the end of it. And I think it's worth revisiting. I, I agree with Sue in that regard.
Ms. Moffett?
I think what Sue just said is the direction I was going when I asked, what are the parameters of what we can discuss? And if you, if the town is going to spend nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that isn't any money that goes at all toward the senior center. I mean, that is money that you have to do because of an agreement. So I'm just going to use the number one million. It's just easier to think. It's a million dollars the town would have to pay because of an agreement because of the site. Now, if you have a fourth site in that very same area, and it's three quarters of a million dollars, it still does nothing for the senior center or for the people that are there. So I think it needs to be a site that doesn't require close to a million dollars or three quarters of a million dollars to have that site. It should, the site should be chosen without that cost added on to it. I think a million dollars going into this whole project, and it has absolutely nothing to do with the site or with the seniors, needs to be reconsidered.
Well, just to, the two sites you've mentioned, both the administration and the Gus Canty site.
Yes.
Back in phase one, the cost of those would be about a million dollars than it was at these other sites. So it's, you know, you can't say, oh, it's the same cost that we're saving a million dollars by going back to one of those sites. The cost of the buildings there had other issues, and we saw those numbers also. But we, you can go back and look there.
I felt that the presentation that was given us, given to us on the administration building was lacking. A lot of information. I thought that what we looked at was not what I anticipated to be what the senior center would look like. There seemed to be a containment of the building, and it didn't extend to any of the, the property. There was more discussion about where elevators would be and stairs would come out, which wasn't the part of the visual of that building being restructured. I felt, I, I really felt that presentation lacked, which really drove me up to Brick Hill Road because I didn't like that presentation. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think we had the proper information.
We had pushed him pretty hard to look at a reuse of combining the two buildings as opposed to the option of a separate building on that site. We really had not pushed that option very strongly.
That's right. Okay. I don't want to spend a million dollars if the senior center doesn't have a benefit. A million dollars for something that they receive a benefit, I think, is what I would consider.
I also don't want a million dollars to stop us from doing a senior center, though.
Oh, absolutely not. Oh, no. Oh, no, I don't think, I don't think that's in the discussion.
Right.
Well.
Did you think that was in the discussion?
If we don't move forward and make some progress, then that means nothing happens, and that...
Oh, no, I definitely agree that we're moving forward.
We've got to figure out a plan to, how do we move forward and get the enthusiasm and the support of the town and town meeting for the site.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Okay.
Well, the schedule I heard played out in the presentation at the finance committee basically was that this revisiting of the trade-off would be something that would happen. We would know by November town meeting what that site was. We'd already have some conceptual drawings done as to what it would be like. And then there would be enough time to get detailed drawings going so that we would actually have a number at Fall Town, excuse me, at Spring Town meeting, and it could go on the referendum in May of seventeen. So I don't think we're pushing the schedule out by folding this into the scope of the work of that three hundred thousand dollar contract. Well, contracts is plural.
Well, I think then what we need to do is, next meeting, have some questions for a site, for the site analysis, that we can say, we need these questions answered two or three weeks after town meeting, so we can choose another site. What I wanted to do is have this discussion, was was there any chance that we could nail down a site before town meeting? And it's quite clear that we can't. We have new, we have too many questions we need answered before town meeting to be able to do that. And so I think next meeting, if we can come up with what those questions are, figure out where we're talking about to have analysis of, so we can make a decision at the end after town meeting would be appropriate.
I just want to say something.
You have to come to the podium and give a chidane for the, the TV microphone.
My name is Paula Capoca, and I'm just sitting here listening to all of you, and I'm amazed at the time that's gone by since they decided they needed a senior center. I've gone to almost every meeting, and it just seems to me like if we had been this noteworthy in this, I don't know what the word is, we wouldn't have spent all the money on the high school. It's time to do something for the senior center. And I'm just amazed that it's taken this long. I know that you've all had a lot of work to do on it, but it's time to make a decision, have a meeting, make a decision, and put the building up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vier?
Thank you, Jim Vier, Chairman of Council on Aging. We've spent a lot of time on this project. We've worked really hard on it. And I remain one hundred percent convinced that the high school site is the proper location for this building. You know, we've been talking about a million dollars. If we were going to go out and buy a piece of land to put this building on... If we were going to go out and buy a piece of land to put this building on, we'd be expending funds much like this. And this is the cost, it's part of the cost of building the building on the site where this facility should be located. And I think we need to look at it in those terms. We're building it, a building for a long period of time. You know, this is a 40-year building, or 50-year building or longer. You know, when you take a look at a million dollars to get this building at the right site for this period of time, for this huge segment of our population, I think it kind of puts it in a little bit of perspective. We have to look at it and say, you know, where is the proper location for this building? And if it, if it takes a million dollars to get the right location for, forever, for the right building, for a segment of the population that's going to be half of our, half of our citizens, I think it's a worthy investment. And as Mr. Jones mentioned, you know, the, the costs for Gus Canty or the administration building were higher than the sites at the high school to start with. So, you know, and I'm not pushing for a decision tonight. I think that, you know, we've, we've put this amount of work into this thing. We need to make the right decision. And if it takes us, you know, another month, or six weeks, or whatever it is, to get the information we need to make sure we make the right decision, then I'm absolutely in favor of that. You know, there, the three, the, the three or four sites at the high school, the Brick Hill Road site, we had looked at the Gifford Street site where the field hockey field was, and the site that you've been talking about tonight, the wooded site. I think it'd be great if we could really nail down those alternatives for those costs and look at them, but I still think that that is the proper location after working on this thing for four years. You know, I am convinced that that's where, that's where our future is.
One advantage to the wooded site that I forgot to mention is, the, any replacement field site requires us to wait for two years for the field to be operational. The wooded site does not have that, that requirement, that we actually can, once we have the funding, start construction there right away. Ms. Moffett?
I'd like to ask Mr. Viera a question for you. What is the cost of its grass? I, I think it's a two-year project, if it's just grass. If you, in, in listening to the superintendent speak.
I don't think, Mr. Viera, I could probably answer that question more directly than Mr. Viera can.
All right.
So your question is if the...
It's grass, it's not turf for a million dollars.
That's what we're talking about, is 950,000 for a grass field. Has nothing to do with turf. The two fields that we're talking about replacing at the high school, one is the field hockey field is grass, the other one is the soccer field is grass, and we're, we're talking about we're replacing it behind the high school with a in-kind grass field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitterin?
Mark Fitterin, Precinct Six. A few years ago, when you first advertised for this senior citizens site center selection committee, I applied and no one else did. I was interviewed after a couple of months of waiting, and I wasn't put on the committee. It was a tie vote. At that point in time, I had gone out and looked, and the Cape Cod Baptist Church was available for eight hundred thousand dollars. It's still there, it's still for sale, it's still available. It's just under 12,000 square feet. If you throw in the 3,500 in the building that's already, that we're using currently, there's 15,000 square feet. The 20 million dollar figure that I heard last week, I found was astounding. When the budget director gave the first presentation on this, in the sewer and everything else, the little pink box up top that was supposed to represent the senior center was 5 million dollars. Maybe we should just go back to my original suggestion, buy that building. We could have been in there by now. If you decide to build a newer and better senior center further on down the line, that could be converted into affordable housing, or you could build it right on that spot. Sometimes it's better to do the cheaper thing. And then, as the woman, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, I mentioned, and I'll mention again two words, high school. We're not really that good at building things sometimes. Maybe we should just save the money and move forward. And if you ever wanted to make the building larger, you could put a second floor on that, relatively cheap. You wouldn't need elevators, you could have two large staircases with stair lifts on either side of them, and that would certainly suffice. Maybe we should save some money. Thanks.
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you. We will continue this discussion. The board appreciate a few minutes, a little break. We're going to have about a five-minute recess, and I'll just remind you that when I have a five-minute recess, it's five minutes, we will be starting up at 20 of 10.